What's up, all?
Alderman Persick.
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Here.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Kerwin.
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Here.
Alderman Tudor.
Here.
Alderman Studer.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Counsel, before you guys approve the minutes from April 21st, 2015, for you. For Mayor, I reviewed the minutes and found no errors and would like to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented and have them placed on file. Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Larry Hall. Any discussion? Phil Calvo, please.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor's report tonight, first item on the agenda is to throw in the Alderman for the upcoming terms. And we're out here and start with Mr. Kerwin. Mr. Right hand, speak up, Stephen. I state your name.
I, Kevin Kerwin.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
I solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
The First Ward Alderman.
The First Ward Alderman.
For the City of Wilmington.
For the City of Wilmington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right, next, for Second Ward Alderman, Larry J. Hall.
I'm happy. Can we use you a moment?
Do you want somebody to hold it for you or you want to answer it all for me?
Yeah, thanks. You can hold us. Raise yourself up. So, eight, seventy-five and a half.
As your right hand repeat, I state your name.
I, Larry J. Hall.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Second Ward Alderman.
Of the Second Ward Alderman.
For the City of Wilmington.
For the City of Wilmington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Four more.
Thank you. Four more. All right, next up, the Third Ward Alderman, Frank Tudor.
Is it Frank C. or Frank?
No.
It's Frank.
Mr. Right hand, speak up, Stephen. I state your name.
I, Frank Tudor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A Third Ward Alderman.
A Third Ward Alderman.
For the City of Wilmington.
For the City of Wilmington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Good job, Jerry. All right, next up for a two-year term, right, Frank? Lot up, sir.
I want you to see Jerry in a barlet Bible.
Hey, Jerry, Jerry.
Jerry's got one. He's at Price.
No, we're gonna hold it.
Right hand repeat after me.
Thank you.
I, Frank Tudor.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A Fourth Ward Alderman.
A Fourth Ward Alderman.
For the City of Wilmington.
For the City of Wilmington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Go Blackhawks.
Go Blackhawks.
All right, there, go Blackhawks.
Lastly, Mr. United States. I state your name.
I, Stephen G. Evans.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
A Fourth Ward Alderman.
A Fourth Ward Alderman.
For the City of Wilmington.
For the City of Wilmington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right. Just to get real quick, I know council really didn't change, but it's always exciting, especially for me, being in local politics for so long, to see people have that interest and desire to continue to work and serve the city. I know it's a very, we all know that it's a very unforgiving position that we hold, that we all do this to try to better the city as much as we can to the best of our abilities. And thank you guys for taking the time, and even those that didn't, weren't successful in the elections, but took the time out to run, because they truly care about the city and the direction that it goes in. Most importantly, the people who voted, because everyone did really make that decision, everyone did work, so thank you guys. All right, next item on Mayor's report is the Mayor's appointment for a part-time police officer, Julian Buddy. I know she's not here tonight. Where's the chief? Chief, I don't know if anybody got her, a copy of her resume, if it was just myself. Current, she's looking for the part-time police officer position, and I think, Chief, if I'm not mistaken, one of the, her expertise is really in evidence technician and evidence gathering, correct?
Yes, she is currently in charge of the Wilkani Program. She trains all their evidence technicians, and she's a custodian of all the evidence there. So she will be doing that for us on a part-time basis. She will also take care of the, all of the current evidence in our room at the old station. She will do all the inventory on that, and she will be responsible for the transfer to the new facility.
I think it's, I mean, great to have that type of expertise and that type of, that kind of.
Definitely. She can give our officers training, and she'll be there for us. And she lives very close.
Okay, excellent. At least somebody had the question, the motion to accept her appointment. Do you have that, sorry?
Oh, I guess I agree with you. Well, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Mayor, mayoral appointment of part-time police officer, Julian Buddy.
Buddy.
Okay. To the Wilmington Police Department.
And motion by Alderman Hall, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor. Any discussion? Phil Calvo, please.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
And I'll swear in Officer Buddy at the next government meeting, he'll be there for this, so. Next on the, on the Mayor's appointment, I just wanted to make notice, the chief had brought to my attention that the, we are now approved as an Illinois State Approving Agency for the enrollment of qualified veterans and/or eligible persons to receive the Montgomery GI Bill for educational benefits. There's a lot of paperwork, a lot of stuff had to be going on. Chief really wanted to commend Teresa Fisher, as well as Officer Rhonda Thomas, in their endeavors in making sure that all the necessary paperwork and everything was done to those who qualify for this, correct?
Yes.
How does this, chief, kind of, how does this help us out, you know, in the future?
Currently, we have one veteran, Officer Shashinsky, that got sworn in a few weeks ago, that is still in reserve program, and he finished active duty about a year and a half ago, so he's eligible to participate in this program, which gives him a stipend every month to help him while he's going through our training program. So, the time that he was in academy, and then the additional months that he will be in field training and on probation, he'll be able to receive money from the GI Bill every month to help him and his family out toward his education, or however you choose to use it. But they had to come in, as the mayor said, a lot of paperwork, they had to go through our training program, they had to go through the academy training program that we sent him to, they had to go through our field training officer program, all of our paperwork, the method that we used, which we had just switched about two months ago to a new field training officer method. So they approved all that. They approved our facility to be used, so what's good for us, it's good now for Officer Shashinsky, but will be good in the future as we test for positions, advertise. We're gonna advertise that we are approved, and that maybe will attract more veterans to come and try and get a job with us here at the prison program.
You checked with the Veterans Association on how we could use that money, right?
They tell them exactly how we can use it. They, they monitor, it's very well monitored.
Well, I know what they tell you.
They continue to monitor it, have it in mind of us. They come in to spot checks on our paperwork, make sure that all the standards are in order.
We'll talk after.
So, Chief, I do have a question. For each, if there's another veteran, then another set of paperwork needs to be submitted, or it's just?
No, they've now approved our police department, our training program as part of the Veterans Association.
Okay, thanks.
I think it's what can help us is, is it encourages those veterans that have served in our country, and it shows, you know, how we develop programs to benefit them and their needs if we go to hire people in the future. All right, and continuing with the veteran thing, I have heard of Ford, the BFW's eighth annual BFW Memorial Parade, and ceremony will kick off at noon on May 23rd, that's a Saturday. You'll see the parade ground shows North Water Street, the BFW, because of the ongoing road construction, this continued, chose to change the route to begin at the actual middle school, they'll put on candy key street, Cayman Road, and then coming in the back way into the Veterans Memorial Park, where they'll have a ceremony after that. If anybody can, can be part of the parade, it means very welcome. That's all I have for Mayor's appointments. Mayor's report, citizens' comments, do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Planning and zoning, our next scheduled meeting is this Thursday, May 7th, at 6:00 PM. Committee reports, building grounds, health, parks, safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, May 13th, 2015, at 6:30 PM.
Water, street, streets and alleys, Alderman Studer, Alderman Kerwin.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I move to award the bid submitted by Ostapalos Construction Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder for the Route 53 water main replacement, in the amount not to exceed $567,751.45.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second?
My second.
Second by Alderman Larry Hall. Any discussion? Phil Calvo, please.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
The next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, May 13th, at 5:30 PM.
Lisa Nesta, Alderman Studer, Alderman Tudor.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, May 12th, 2015, at 5:30 PM.
Highness Administration of Land Act, Alderman Studer, Alderman Tudor.
Mr. Mayor, of the first two, I move to approve, May 5th, 2015, accounts payable report in the amount of $372,049.75.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor. Any discussion? Phil Calvo, please.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Alderman Studer, welcome, real quick, before we move forward that motion, we do have the gentlemen from Hain Associates here. What I'd like to do is give them the floor and give them the opportunity to explain what the whole process is with mill race. I know there was questions at the last meeting, and I think we proceed with that first, then vote motion after that, is that be okay with you?
That'd be great.
Guys, floor is yours.
Evening, everyone. I'm Vince Moscow, one of the vice presidents of Hain Associates, and David Kraft.
I think you're one of our engineers.
So, I think you guys are obviously familiar with our proposal somewhat, but our, the evolution with our firm and the city started last year when we were retained partially through HR Green to help with Bobcat Park planning and the Celotex site as potential mitigation sites for hitting out. So, we had done that work, and at the wastewater, we have wastewater treatment plant, and then as that evolution, there's the ongoing issue with the dam, and we do the retrofit or some, what the state is doing on planning. And as a part of that, then Tony had asked us to give some opinions, at least initially about the need to potentially dredge, or what to do with the mill race. So we have developed a proposal to look into the issues related to sediment deposition, the old dam that's on the mill race, and some potential opportunities to look at either dredging, or even some other more innovative retrofits of the mill race, to look at opportunities to have that function better as a feature for the, for the city, but then also as a more of an amenity, and maybe even a more of an ecological feature for, for Island Park.
So with that proposal, with the proposal you have before you now is, is to gather the initial pieces of data as far as how much sediment has been deposited in the mill race, if there is any contamination there, which is gonna really, you know, drive where that sediment can be placed, it has to go to a landfill, if it can be placed on a farm field, for instance, whether or not we may want to leave it in place. Then we'll quantify that, that'll allow us to develop a concept plan for whether dredging is the best option, whether, again, stabilization of the sediment, and looking at some other options for the mill race are our best, advise the city as far as what the cost of that may be, and, you know, move forward with a plan that, you know, will allow the city to pursue additional funding for projects along the mill race to, you know, to really implement whatever plan it is that is determined to be most beneficial to the citizens on goals and objectives and by.
Where we dovetail then, with the state, my understanding, the mill race really isn't on the state's radar, to any large degree, so no matter which direction the state goes on dam changes, the mill race still is the entity that it is. The old dam that grew out in the 90s, and it's been sort of cobbled back together again, so it's there, it's sort of functioning, but, you know, long-term, whether there's some opportunities to maybe look at modifying that, and even try to change the elevation of that dam to actually make perhaps more of a tiered system down through the mill race, actually promote flow, and provide some more recreational opportunities. So, the proposals in front of you sort of lays the groundwork on getting the survey and some of the factual data, and then we'll, then use our sort of thoughts on where that can go for the future, and how the city can, you know, potentially look for funding to help to move that forward. So we can open up for questions, if there's anything specific, or we can go into more details as necessary, but.
I think the big thing is, is really, my, is to develop that baseline. I don't think, if we don't have that baseline, anyway, nothing we can do with the dam, or the mill race at all, because every course is, you know, hands-off until we know what's in there. Two, we don't have no availability to go for funding, because you need that, you need to demonstrate what we have in there, in the baseline there. One thing that's always bothered me is, the mill race has been under temporary permit since, I think, 92. I believe the elevation level of that's always been higher than the current Kankun River dam, and that's what created that sediment, filled up all the grants we sold the other years, but now we really haven't. It's made an impact on islands and how, you know, what we don't, we continue, I guess, ignore it, it's just gonna get worse and progress and worse over time, we tend to lose what we have, you know, which is what we are, and I think it's really critical to be, or to try and get, you know, at least a baseline, get this established. If there's funding mechanisms that are coming through, which are, which are coming out through federal programs, obviously, there's a real big push on flood alliance and flood management, and try to, you know, hit, hit those things before they become bigger issues that they were several years ago, and ourselves was the big one, and stuff like that, so I'm kind of, I think, I think we're coming in at the right time.
I think that it's, the study is set up, that some of the information that we collect will have a shelf life, you'll be able to use that information, and it will go so very nicely with the rest of the initiatives throughout the park. So even if, for some reason, dredging doesn't move forward, a lot of the information that we collect now will actually be able to give, give, and use that in the future permits on other initiatives.
I understand correctly that your proposal includes sampling?
Yes.
Does it include the testing also, samples?
It's the physical sampling and the lab analysis.
The lab analysis. Are you guys going to hire somebody to come out and take custody of the samples, or you delivering the samples, or how, we do use it?
We typically do that ourselves, we've got experience doing that, and then they'll be delivered, and we've got a couple of labs we work with, and for whatever reason, someone had a preferred lab, we can certainly coordinate with that.
Do you have a plan on how deep you're gonna sample?
Some of it'll, the sampling's gonna be coordinated with the survey, so the first step is really gonna be to do what we call an anthropometric survey, so basically figure out how deep the mill race is, you know, from a survey perspective, then in doing that, we'll also manage the soft sediment depth, so it's fairly easy, especially with the bottom constituents, you know, that Kankun Key has, to figure out how much of that is soft sediment that's placed. Really, when we get out there and doing that, we've got Plan Three, you know, three sampling locations as an initial option for, for the sediment sampling, which is, you know, from our experiences and the other folks we've talked to, a good initial stab at it, those would generally be spread out over the reach, but that initial surveying, we will sort of inform where it's best to do that, you know, if we have deeper sediments here, we'll probably screw that direction. So a little bit of, will be field judgment based on that, but, you know, we'll use our experience to determine those locations.
And I don't know if there's any historic records of what the depth of it used to be when it was original. There's probably a story, and an historian might be able to tell you that.
Yeah, you know, I've heard anything from Hain Associates, I think, when they do that soft sediment check, and I think what's really key about Hain Associates is, they are a water management organization, they're not, they're really key on that type of, you know, they're not, they're typical business that's got 12 different departments doing a lot of things, you know, and that's what's back to telling these guys, that, that's their focus, is on water management.
Is it gonna be your intention, then, to give us some examples of the construction techniques that you use?
What you've got in front of you, basically, it was approached as, you know, dredging was the option that was presented to us, is what was determined as a liability. So whether it's dredging or some other option for restoration of the mill race, the first thing to determine is to get how much sediment is in there, so that's really the first step of that, and then really, the second step is to figure out what is that sediment. If it's really just topsoil that's run off of the watershed over the last hundred years, it's collected there, and it's fairly clean, there's a lot of options for it. If it were to have some kind of contamination, it may have to go to landfill, and that's gonna have a really, really large impact on the cost of that sediment somewhere. So those are the first two questions to answer. From there, we can sort of provide a cost based upon experience, on what disposal that material would, would cost if you're gonna dredge, but then also some other options as far as, you know, we could look at other restoration, you know, methodologies for the, you know, for the mill race. So that'll sort of be the backend of this proposal, is we'll give you all the dredging information that's outlined in detail in there, so that you've got that going forward. But I think what, what we're, what our belief is that, and if there's a strong link, dredging is expensive, I mean, it just is.
I was assuming that it would be possible because of how narrow it is, maybe to pile it at the front end and dry it up.
Well, if you're gonna dredge, we're gonna give you numbers for both options, there's two real kinds of dredging.
You're thinking about the same option.
Absolutely. There's two real kinds of options for dredging generally, hydraulic dredging, which is basically where they're going out, when it's, when there's water on top of it, it's got a high water content, they suck it out like a vacuum. If you've got a nice upland area to pump it to, like a farm field that's close enough, that can be fairly economical. In your case, we're, that's probably not, there's probably nothing close to just pumping to, there's a couple of options we're gonna investigate, more than likely not a, a close option. Mechanical dredging, meaning typical earth moving equipment, you know, bulldozer, you know, a track hub, something like that, is gonna be the best option. The benefit that the mill race has is at the little crossing up by the, up by the main dam, and it'd be really easy to cougher that off, and it may take three months, six months to dry it, to be able to work it, but at that point, it becomes fairly cost-effective to move that material. Now, again, the flip side is, even there, you know, just as a quick off-the-cuff number, you may need to move 40,000 or 50,000 yards of material to have any real benefit for the mill race as far as ecologically, recreationally, anything like that. Thing with those numbers are gonna show is that there may be other things we can do with the mill race, for instance, taking that temporary dam, spreading that, you know, six to eight foot elevation drop over there, having a couple of little step pools through there that'll encourage drainage, which is basically block it off now from that dam, it'll provide recreational opportunities. We could probably design it so that you can maneuver kayak up or downstream, and there's a fair chance that when you compare dredging, the amount of material that would be necessary to restore it back to what it was versus some type of restoration, those costs end up not being all that, all that different a lot of times. That's sort of the, the broad scale level of what, what this initial proposal would be. If that moves forward, if all the information is what we suggest, you know, we'll give you the dredging costs, so you can weigh those, we'll also give you that plan, you know, sort of, here's a couple of options on a, on an almost, you know, sort of, concept, you know, nice drawing level, but no engineering behind it, that then you can start approaching, you know, affiliate money comes through, or some other option, or grant money comes through, you have something to go to them for, then if you get funding, you move it into like a preliminary engineering, and start to actually develop construction plans for a project of that nature, and then, you know, there's a lot more input that comes to community, and put those kinds of things for a project left ahead.
We're fortunate enough to have a few assets close to us here, our junior training site, the, the, the equipment that might be interested in helping us in this situation.
Yeah, I mean, I, my personal opinion, I've been walking the site a few times, so there's a lot of potential to really make that a true amenity for the community, I mean, as far as, you know, instead of having a big, wide, flat, relatively shallow channel at this point, we may take it from 50 feet down to 20 feet, speed the water up a little bit, you know, you get a little flow in there, you get, you get some visual appeal to it, restore, instead of paying to take that sediment out, we'll just vegetate it and restore it, and then we can create pathways and little overlooks and stuff on there, and, you know, there's a lot of options at that point to incorporate it into the park. Now, again, that's all, always off, a lot of money, but this will be the start to figure out if that's a good way to head, or dredging makes sense, and it's the first piece of information.
And even, even burn in the, which would be the east side of the island across there that, to help contain and flood would be nice to use for that material, if, if it's clean.
If it's well, yeah, I think, the other, sorry, I'm talking about, the other things, one of the things from the, from a flood control perspective along the mill race, right now it's really controlled by the temporary dam, and there's not a lot, dredging doesn't buy you a lot of conveyance in there, but if we take that and spread that profile and put it back up, then you may pick up conveyance, and we may be able to address at least the flooding related to the mill race in a project like that also, I mean, that'd be a secondary goal. Now, once the river pops over and the whole area is flooded, the mill race is a little bit immaterial to true flooding, you know, with respect to that, our understanding is there are instances, the mill race itself is flooding out of the island from that side, so that very well may be able to be implemented for a project like that.
All of those will take your testing, as you said.
The, our survey, you know, what we're looking at is probably getting out fairly soon here after, you know, the swimming approval, or if it were to be approved, and then honestly, having a little depth in the water will help us, we wait till it's dry, we're not gonna be walking out there with weight, you know, five feet of sediment.
with a, 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 with a,
And it's during construction of the actual dredging operation, and if you potentially, where that sediment's going, if you're doing hydraulic dredging, where you actually have a lot of liquid flowing with the sediment, then that return water is a big issue for I E P A. They have pretty strict standards on water quality as it returns back to the river.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, thank you.
Back, folks, back to you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, move to approve the Hayen Associates Incorporated Mill Race Dredging Feasibility Analysis in the amount to exceed 20,000 dollars.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin. Any discussion? Well, couple.
Alderman Stuter.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
You.
Okay. You're up, Mayor.
Yay.
Before anybody starts.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want me to get that? Yes. Thanks, guys. Before we get started, there is an easier way of doing item three, four, and five. So, you need the, what the attorney's recommending is, since we're approving an amendment to the original contract, we are still increasing the cost, so we still need to do that typical motion, and we're waiving, go on to competitive bidding, if it's over 20,000. But you could do a motion to waive competitive bidding for item three, four, and five as one motion. And then you could have a vote on that, and then you could do a motion to approve items three, four, and five as one motion.
You'd have to add the total amount?
Yes.
Do you have the total amount?
The total amount is 100.
I don't have a calculator.
Because I know the prices of 32,200 and 26,200 have been reduced.
I have it, fine. It's 140,000. You're the first one, I can chip.
You need, you need to.
130,300.
Alderman Tudor, if you want to write, do a motion to waive competitive bidding for Phase Two construction of, for the police station, for the police facility. And just do that one single motion.
I make a motion to waive competitive bidding for Phase Two construction for the new police facility.
For freezer construction.
For freezer construction.
A motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second? I'll select a second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion? Well, couple, please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Stuter.
Pass.
Alderman Van Dyne.
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
You've got six yes, one pass, one nay, motion passes.
The next one will be to, before we move forward with that, I know in regards to the minutes and other people out there, Chief, can you kind of highlight the two changes for the offices and the bathroom?
Sure. There are currently an area in the station that was originally planned to be the squad room, pretty large area. We realized that at some point during the planning stage, there were some things taken out of the project, including offices for the sergeant. Because we are now ahead of schedule and below budget on our phases, we have the amount of money needed to complete those two offices and a restroom and still be under budget and ahead of schedule. The amount, number four, number five, the amounts are different, they are less than what we have in the agenda. I think those were all passed out, should all have the copies that show the differences. The difference, the reason they're different is because when I originally got the price on doing these offices and a restroom, it was thought of sometime down the line, a year or two down, if we were able to get some money to do it, I wanted to have an idea what it would cost to complete that. Because we are ahead now and under budget, we do have enough to do it and still remain under budget and ahead of schedule.
I think before you guys, the chief has also handed out an amended contract, which shows the remaining balance of 42,000 dollars and is a positive, and that includes these proposed additions, correct?
Yes, that includes the office and the restroom.
That's the, that's the new price, so, not the price that's written on what we're voting for.
No.
Right, right. Okay. So, you actually be. You got the correct numbers? Instead of the 32,200 and the 26,200?
There's a new total.
Yeah, so these have, this one has the new totals.
It has the new totals, yeah, it has, it's definitely the total.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Does this, just a quick question, Chief, if we remove the board on this, does this show any, does this show the potential savings under Phase One that we might like to see in the T N M proposal? Or does this still show the additional amount?
This, this still shows the original amount, so this is not showing, currently, as of today, the report I received today, we are 30,340 dollars.
To the good.
To the good, of Phase One. And we're two and a half weeks in advance of being completed. Advance, we'll be finished a week from tomorrow with Phase One.
Okay. So, even these numbers, no reflect a positive number, they still could reflect a greater positive number based on what numbers they're selling to with Phase One, a little over 30,000 dollars.
Yes.
If you add 30,000 dollars to the 42, we're right around 72, and that could even grow as we go into Phase Two and stuff like that with the T N M proposal, correct?
Exactly, because Phase Two is, as the mayor mentioned, a T N M proposal, you know, there's, you never know what might happen, but I think that's the worst case scenario. So, we expect, as it was with Phase One, to hopefully come in less than the 89,000.
I do want to say that Greg's been doing a fabulous job keeping him to task, and I think having him there has been very beneficial with the cost savings that we're demonstrating.
Definitely. So, the board knows, every Friday at 1:00 in the afternoon, we have a meeting here at the table with Greg and myself, and a representative from each of the contractors doing the job. We go over what was completed that week and what's planned for the following week. We go over all the budget, you know, what the costs were for that week, so we have it on a weekly basis, we know exactly where we're at.
Chief, is this the final, Phase Two? Yes. Is it the final phase?
Phase Two is the final phase.
And I, we're still pushing for, I think we're still projecting a June 1st open date.
Yes.
We're pretty close to that. And I think what's nice is, I mean, we're showing 42, this could grow to easily 72 based on early numbers, and can potentially grow more based on the T N M and how it's coming to work. Even Phase Two could come in less than what the proposal amount is currently right now.
Yes.
So, on the bottom part here, what is completed down there so far?
Everything that has the dollar amount in there, they've been completed.
Okay, so landscaping and signage is the only two that's not completed.
Correct. And they're working on that signage right now with the old police station signage and things.
So, I'm looking, I'm looking at that, and out of that, 42,000?
Well, no, that's kind of, the 45 is.
Oh, okay, that's that additional that we talked about the last time.
Yeah, that 45, does that reflect the 45 that?
So, even at 10,470?
I knew it was gonna have 35 years.
I caught it.
Okay, very good. Now, we still have 10,450.
I was just checking.
All right. So, we're all good there. Did you get the total numbers, you get the motion?
I have.
140,230 dollars.
So, my only question is, in reading these motions, do I have to explain exactly what each one of them are for?
No, you could read the motion, all as one, correct?
Correct.
As that motion reads, that will satisfy the needs of three of them.
Yeah, you're approving an amendment to the freezer contract for Phase Two and multipurpose room and bathroom not to exceed 140,230.
Yeah, that was my question. I have to read what each one, like, I'm not reading it individually, but generally what they're for.
Right.
Got it. Hey, are we ready?
I think so. Does anybody have any, go ahead, read the motion.
All right, wish me luck, I'm going. I move to approve motions three, four, and five for freezer construction contract for Phase Two, the new police facility, and for the multipurpose room offices and multipurpose room bathroom not to exceed 140,230 dollars.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Persick. Any further discussion? Well, couple.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
No.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Stuter.
Pass.
We have six yes, one no, one pass, motion passes.
You.
I move to approve the C E S Incorporated proposal for the fire alarm system at the new police facility, the amount not to exceed 12,359 dollars.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second? I'll select a second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion? Well, couple, please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Stuter.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, motion passes.
I move to approve the proposal provided by Porter Lee Corporation for Equipment and Software, in the amount not to exceed 12,648 dollars and 50 cents.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin. Any discussion? Well, couple, please.
What is this question? What is this for? That's the evidence, the evidence software, equipment needed to modernize and record, and also for continuing in the future to, barcoding everything else for all the future evidence.
That's that new system that the state's working with.
And the county has a system.
Also holds training.
Yes, it does.
Any further discussion? Well, couple, please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Stuter.
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next meeting scheduled, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, May 19th at 6:00 P. M.
Order and some license, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, May 13th, 2015, at 8:00 P. M.
First round of collective bargaining over all of the Persick?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
You, administrative board.
Yeah, on the notes, Kessler Engineering is gonna be bringing to the building, well, if you build in Brown's ordinance and licenses, we'll see which one, building Brown's agenda's getting kind of steep. What he's proposing is to pilot program that he is going to bring in building inspector, and he'll be paying for, the chief and I and Attorney Urban interviewed the candidate, he has prior experience working for other municipalities in this area, retired, wants to come back into the field, but he will be hiring, Kessler will be hiring him to assist him with building inspections, but he also has code enforcement experience, especially working in N A with the administrative adjudication in Nantito. So, what Chuck's gonna do is he's put a proposal together for the summer to work with us and have this subject also do code enforcement besides miscellaneous permits. The individual will be here three days a week, so we will have hosted hours, so even the residents will be able to come in for the fences, the decks, the roofs, and all those, where they could maybe come in in the morning, and by afternoon they'll be able to get their permit. I think that's gonna help expedite miscellaneous permits and be good for our residents and local contractors, they come in, be able to get started, especially with a lot of its weather related sometimes, when they do these, especially to do your own type projects, when they work on decks and fences. So, when we have that proposal, we'll bring it to, I think we're, we're gonna be getting ordinance and licensing, because we have to come up with a method for this person to get the authority to write the citations, and John's done this deal, telling us, I have a legal opinion in that, for the ordinance of licensing, to appoint the individual to be the co-enforcement officer on a part-time basis. And this will be a six-month trial, and this is gonna help, because what Kessler's offering up is, all the funds that are collected in miscellaneous permits, like last year, we had close to 19,000 collected, well, 19,000 dollars in miscellaneous permits, for the six-month program, we're looking at this cost to be about 2,400 dollars a month, so for six months, we're looking at about 15,000 dollars. What I did ask Chuck is to maybe put a catch-all in there, not to exceed the miscellaneous permits cost, so miscellaneous permits will actually pay for this individual. He'll also do the inspections, we're not gonna charge anymore to our residents, and we end up, I think, a little bit back to what it was years ago, where we had inspectors in-house right here. I think this program would be good to see how it runs for six months, and I think it's gonna be self-paying by fees, so it won't be impacting the budget in regards to things. Otherwise, under his contract, when he does those miscellaneous permits, he has a right to collect those fees, so it's an invoice, we pay him for those fees. So, I think it's maybe one way of keeping our budget in check, but also getting what we're willing to do. I know the chief was excited about it, because having a police officer try to say, well, this is hard to do, and consistency is one of the biggest things, as the mayor goes, to follow, once you give notice, you wanna, gotta go back to 10 days and say, did they fix it or not fix something? And I think that's gonna help with their adjudication process too, if they get anything through the hearing, to be able to show the property. Because the way we're doing it now is taking people into court, and as we know, I know John's gonna update on the Engler property, how long it's taken us to get compliances through the court system, so I think this process will work a lot better, and we'll start working on some of the general property, and compliance. So, I'll share with everybody at the.
I have one question for you.
Yeah.
Repeat again, and you don't have to go into great detail, but we're not getting into another I C C I thing where it's a pass-through, we don't get anything.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is a pass-through. Basically, you look at this way, you know, we hire somebody, you know, they work with comp, pay all this stuff, pay all this fee, and we, the funds basically go to pay for, you know, the person we hire, or we, it's a contract service, so to speak, or the fund, they're still paying for that person if they're contracted amount. So, that's kind of what we're looking at, but it's, we'll bring it forward to O and L next week.
And we'll do that analysis from last year, how much we collected in regards to it.
Fair enough.
I honestly believe, there'll probably be about administrative fee costs, I think we'll still capture that, I mean, 2,000 or 3,000 plus at time.
Well, I think we was close to 19,000 dollars last year, and what was nice is with Kessler and Chuck Kessler, you know, he had, he turned here, kind of handled a lot of that stuff for us, but he didn't take the money from us, he basically said, I'm not gonna charge you guys for this, and the money that was received on most of it, basically, was, you know, allowed to use to stay in our job of corporate. So, now we're taking that process. There's a process we need to get to, because it's, like Tony said, it is a weakness kind of in our system as far as code enforcement's huge. We want to move forward towards property management, we passed that ordinance a couple years ago towards property management, and I think we need to really start to gravitate towards that step. And sometimes with challenges in the budget, we try to look things where they're kind of, one hand washes the other, where there's not an impact on the budget negatively. It may not be a positive act, you know, thing on the budget, but we're not really looking for that, we're looking for compliance first. Well, if we go out and punish people and get money from them, we're looking to make sure that everything's in compliance, so that's kind of what we're trying to work towards.
And the reason I brought up tonight is, he's already hired the individual, but he's hired her on that, he's still gotta get approval for his amendment to his contract, so we're not, I didn't pay anything yet, why would you all of a sudden say?
You may see him out there.
The gentleman's sitting there, wondering who's paying for it, right now Chuck is. And we'll have more of an update. The only other updates, Kobe wanted me to do an update on 102, because we see phone calls today, he's always reported that on 102, that we're not gonna block any lanes. They decided that they are gonna block some lanes due to the fact that the milling machine has a tendency to throw debris, so they didn't want anyone getting close to it, so alongside the milling machine, they gave more space, so there was a flagger out there today, and will be one of the millings going on. Once they get the milling down, then we won't have flaggers on a 102, so hopefully in the next few days, they'll have it all milled out, and then there'll be, it'll be two-way traffic. They do know, because Dee's in charge of both projects, they do know the time sensitivity of when the milling's gonna go on, they're gonna try to get everything done a little bit after school, and have it done by mid-afternoon for, so, well, if anybody was getting phone calls about the traffic, so. They're hoping, on the bridge, they're very optimistic on where they're at, so that's what I could tell you, so, Dr. Johnson.
Has Kobe talked to them about some of them sidewalks that they put in?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know a whole lot about it, but there's a couple of them out there I know is not even close to where they're supposed to be.
The inspectors are supposed to be coming out before they, before they finalize down and all that stuff, see if they're gonna take some of those out or not, so they gotta, they gotta still get inspected.
Yeah, I drove by there today, and I go, you gotta be kidding.
Wouldn't be the first time the state's had to redo it.
Correct. Really, good thing about it is, it won't start a project up if they do find one or two of them, we're not putting in the specs, they're not, they can still do the milling, they do the overlay, they come back and, sidewalks, sidewalks, mainly an elevation issue, as you will.
Yeah.
So, we're still looking at, we're hoping.
We're hoping.
But what about the traffic coming over the bridge, toward the island, what about, we talked about that, if we can have one way through the island?
They put the no right-hand turnup, yeah, they, Gary ordered the signs, he had something in sack, so he ordered the signs, so he's gonna put those up on the island, no right turn, only right turn, only left turn, as they come over there, so hopefully we'll have those signs.
So, that now, or.
This is a question for the chief. You took a couple of pictures that I saw of the intersections being blocked by people, has the chief?
I had to come out, put up some, do not block the intersection signs, they don't, they don't always work, but again, it's construction, and it's going to happen. Our officers have been pulling people over, you know, they have to be, you know, he pulls me over, now you're causing more of a blocked traffic, so they've been pretty good at pushing the cars away, and, you know, they have to go in the direction that they want to go in, but that's what they get for blocking. So, they're doing what they can, but it is a.
I know they can't do their 24/7, and I understand that, it's just, it's frustrating when you got semi sitting in the middle of the intersection and nobody can go anywhere.
It's not just, it's not just semi.
No, no, I understand, but the ones I have encountered have them, so.
And when they're backed up almost all the way to the launching pad.
Yeah.
We'll have to pass out stress mode. Then I'll, then I'll, you have to.
What's the span of the construction for that water main?
Right now, it's scheduled six months. It shouldn't take that long, they got some unknowns. For sure.
But then the water main.
Yeah, it should only take four months, once they start in June, it should be done by Christ. Everything goes right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Urban, please fill us in.
Thank you. Yesterday I was in court on the house on, let the house on Falls Street, essentially has a half law report, and I had filed a multiple default judgment, because the defendant did not file an answer to the case, and I found out during that, they just filed an appearance a month or so ago, and of course he didn't sign a copy, which is required to do. So, we're in court yesterday, we're in court, he's got 30 days in which to get another, well, to get an attorney and to file an answer to complaints. And we'll be back in court on June 18th, and he gets an attorney, he'll be back in court, and I believe we should be able to come to a resolution of the property and get it in form of a lease quote, but back in court on June 18th, and I'll report back to you. The next meeting after that is to report on it.
Just to follow, there's some inquiries about the watch shop.